I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Battley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some business arrangements to make on the agenda. We are pulling three items to be carried over to our May 8th meeting. The first is the public hearing E., we're going to do that on May 8th. The second is, under Administration, Human Resources, item seven is a whole item that we will be reviewing on May 8th. And the third is under Educational Services, item five is on the consent agenda. We're removing that and moving it to May 8th.
It's Business Services, item number seven. The whole item, Tier 3 flexibility.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So we're pulling that.
Thank you.
And...
An education plan.
An education plan, correct.
An education plan, okay. So we're just pulling three items off the agenda for May 8th. It's just a little communication. So no public hearing tonight. Under item F, Special Recognitions and Presentations, our first item, our student representatives will make the presentation of the Student of the Month awards to two students from each secondary school in the Petaluma Joint Union High School District for the month of April. And how this works is, we have the representatives from each of the comprehensive sites come forward, and they introduce the students who are the Students of the Month. They come, get their award, look into the camera. We hear about the wonderful accomplishments they've had. And then they go to sit down, and we acknowledge their family at that time, and then we go through. And normally, I have the honor of handing the awards out, but tonight, Mr. Battley will be handling them. So if you want to go ahead. Okay, so would our representative from Kennelworth Junior High come forward, please?
Hi, I'm Lauren Eagles, and I'm with Kennelworth. Kennelworth Junior High School's plan is proud to introduce the April Student of the Month, Lauren Neath. Lauren Hushstein, while at Kennelworth, she consistently earns a 4.0 and is within several A pluses. Lauren's teachers are continuously impressed by Lauren academically and personally. They say that Lauren is a hard-working student who goes above and beyond with all of her assignments. Their teachers can rely on Lauren to put enthusiastic effort into every assignment, work diligently on projects, and to actively participate in teamwork. They also notice that she is well-liked and respected by her peers. They say that she gets along with everyone and has a great sense of self-esteem that is infectious. This year, Lauren has been a key part of the Kennelworth community as an important member of the leadership class and by acting as one of our student representatives at our school board meetings. Throughout Kennelworth, Lauren is seen as a role model for other students and a pleasure to have in class. Lauren excels in all of her classes, but this year, geometry is her favorite as math has always been a strength for her. She also enjoys physical sciences here because it's so hands-on. Lauren describes herself as competitive and determined, and those characteristics apply to both school and sports. When Lauren is not working hard on assignment, you can find her on the softball field where she plays for two different teams as pitcher. She also participates in Kennelworth Track. Lauren is also musically talented. Since the age of four, she's been playing violin. She passes on her love of music by running a music class at Corona Creek Elementary School. Lauren is also very involved in her community. She created a backpack drive at Corona Creek for four lessons in a backpack. In her free time, Lauren enjoys drawing and spending time with her friends. Her friends enjoy Lauren's quirky, endearing, and humorous personality. Lauren already has clear goals for her future. She wants to attend the University of California at Berkeley, just like her father. She already enjoys visiting the campus for sporting events. She also knows that she wants to be a binary engineer. Lauren learned binary code in fourth grade in Gage. She still enjoys using it. It is obvious to everyone at Kennelworth that Lauren has a very bright future in front of her. If she continues her approach like it is same motivation, determination, and joy for learning, she is bound to excel beyond all expectations. Congratulations, Lauren.
And Kennelworth Junior High is pleased to introduce the other April Student of the Month, Eric Frisch.
Eric is an excellent student who has impressed all of Kennelworth. He has maintained exceptional grades throughout his two years at Kennelworth, including several A pluses. His teachers always say that he strives to do his best. Teachers feel that Eric is an excellent student who is well-respected by his classmates for his worth of his intelligence and for being earnest. They also say that he is one of the best participants in class and is confident in his abilities while still maintaining a humble attitude. They are all impressed by how he is able to articulate his bright ideas in class discussion. In addition to his outstanding class performance, teachers are also impressed by his respectful and helpful attitude with his fellow students. Eric is a well-rounded student who also excels in music and athletics. Eric plays clarinet for the Kennelworth Band. He played with the band at Disneyland last year, and he is currently gearing up to play in the Butter and Eggs A-级. Beyond the band, Eric is also self-taught himself the guitar. Since the beginning of eighth grade, he and other Kennelworth students have formed their own bands. Eric plays guitar for the band, and he often meets up with them to practice songs and write original music. Eric's other passion is sports. In seventh grade, Eric played football for the Petaluma Panthers and lacrosse for the Petaluma River Cats. For Kennelworth, he was a key player on our basketball team for both years. Next year, he will be trying out for both football and basketball at CASA. Because he loves sports, physical education has been his favorite class this year. All of Eric's peers, family, and teachers appreciate his maturity, thoughtfulness, and kindness. His friends describe him as humorous, fun, and modest. Eric's parents must be very proud of all he has accomplished and of the impressive young man he has become. Eric has many role models that he follows within his family. Both of his two older sisters are attending prestigious universities, and his older brother is also on the college track at high school. After finishing high school, Eric dreams of going on to college, specifically at Duke, where he would love to play basketball and gain a quality education. He looks forward to visiting Duke this summer so he can start planning his future. We here at Kennelworth assure that he will be successful in all of his future endeavors in his determination, determined quest for excellence. Congratulations to Eric.
Would you like to acknowledge Eric's and Lauren's families? If they would rise so that we can... Okay, and representative from Petaluma Junior High.
Hi, my name is Ty Pearson, and I'm a PJHS Leadership Student. And Petaluma Junior High School has selected Dean Douglas as April Student of the Month. A creative, bright, and motivated young man, Dean Douglas has been selected as Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for April 2012. Dean's teachers all agree that he is a pleasure to teach, and adults and peers alike are drawn to his engaging and vivacious personality. Dean is intelligent, hard-working, and dependable, outgoing, and has a great sense of humor. He has earned a 4.0 throughout his junior high school years and was honored with the Renaissance Award as a result. In keeping with his junior high school achievements, Dean won two citizenship awards and the President's Award for Excellence in Elementary School. In addition, he was placed in the Gate Program and had a main role in the sixth-grade play Bedside Man. A well-rounded student, Dean's main passion is playing sports. He plays basketball and runs for the track team at PJHS. Recognized by peers, he was voted Athlete of the Year in his eighth-grade yearbook. Outside of school, Dean actively participates in baseball and indoor soccer. His three brothers, ages seven, twelve, and seventeen, are involved in sports as well. The whole family will attend various games to watch each other play, and Dean greatly enjoys spending time with family at these events. Dean's future goals include attending a good college and discovering a career where he can make a difference. He would like to continue to play sports in a college, and if possible, play on a professional baseball team. When asked about some of the more important issues facing him and his peers, Dean described his concern over the economy and the importance of having access to an affordable and... to an affordable education and a successful career. Dean's parents say Dean has always given 100% in everything he does. We know he has a bright future ahead of him, and we couldn't be more proud of the young man he's become. Congratulations, Dean.
Family, if you would rise to be acknowledged.
And Petaluma Junior High School has selected Marcel Perez Calvero as the other April Student of the Month. A bright and highly motivated student, Marcel Perez Calvero has been chosen as Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for April 2012. Marcel is taking advanced classes such as geometry and advanced English in the eighth grade while maintaining a 4.0 grade point average. She plays the flute in the PJHS Honor Band and takes pride representing her school in music events. Her band teacher states Marcel is a valued member of the Honor Band's flute section. She has worked diligently for two years to be able to play at this level. We are very proud of her. This comment exemplifies how all of her teachers view Marcel as an image of excellence. They are very excited to have her in their class and spontaneously explain Marcel is an amazing student and a positive role model for all of her peers. In Elementary School at Valle d'Isa, Marcel was invited to become a member of the after-school Odyssey of the Mind program, an honor offered to highly creative and motivated students. Marcel has also been given the cherished designation of a Gate student. Marcel enjoys spending time talking, laughing, and playing with her family. They are very close and supportive of Marcel's hard work in school. She has two older sisters, ages seventeen and eighteen, who are attending Santa Rosa Junior College, leading the way for Marcel to be a member of the first generation in her family to attend higher education. Marcel's goals include doing well in school so she can attend a good college and possibly become a lawyer. She is thankful to all teachers for pushing me to work hard and helping to become the person I am today. Marcel's parents say, "We feel very proud of our daughter, Marcel, for all her success and what she has accomplished. We have that all her dreams and goals come true." Also, "We want to thank all the teachers for their support and motivation that has been given to her in order to succeed." Congratulations, Marcel.
Would you like Marcel's family to stand up and be a daughter? Thank you. And our representative from CASA Grande High School.
Hi, I'm Haley Johnston, and we're the CASA Grande co-ASC president. And our first Student of the Month is Haley Stratter. Haley Stratter is currently ranked 13th in her class at CASA Grande High School. She has earned a 4.67 GPA last grading period and has a cumulative GPA of a 4.6. She has been a member of the National Honor Society for three years and was their 2011-2012 coming representatives. She has been taking Mandarin Chinese for all four years at CASA Grande and has also taken up Spanish for the past two years to enjoy studying languages and plans to study Chinese further in college along with international relations and pre-law. Haley has been a member of the CASA Grande symbolic band for her junior and senior year and has participated in many parades, football games, concerts with band. She is also an active member of the community with 200 hours of volunteer work completed. Lastly, Haley has been a rhythmic gymnast since she was nine years old. As a Level 9 senior, she has been the state champion for the past two years in a row. She has also been to the Junior Olympics and placing 35th on two individual events and placing eighth all around out of the top 17 in the county, country. She now works as a part-time assistant coach at her gym, spreading the knowledge of her sport onto her younger teammate.
Congratulations. And Haley's family, are they here to be a part?
Our next student of the month for April is Nicolette Rado. Nicolette's dedication to her academics can be seen by her ability to maintain a stellar academic record. While pursuing a variety of interests, Nicolette has taught herself with AP courses by actively participating in a diverse assortment of extracurricular activities, ranging from travel soccer teams to president of CASA Grande's key club. Additionally, she has held a job at NICU the past 13 months. Her ability to maintain a 4.05 overall GPA is also a direct result of her hard work and self-discipline. Nicolette's community involvement includes working with ELD students in the Wall School District during the summer, coaching soccer to young girls for the Petaluma Youth Soccer League, and assisting children at the Giants of Therapeutic Writing Center. Not only does she find time to work with the youth in our community, she also finds time to volunteer at the Seminary Senior Home in Petaluma Valley Hospital. Nicolette has made clear that her goal is to study environmental science. For her senior project, she constructed an electric bicycle and hopes of promoting an energy-efficient alternative mode of transportation. Nicolette is very passionate about helping to solve our environmental problems and would like to ultimately work in a field where she helps make a difference in the problems. And would like to ultimately work in a field where she helps make a difference in the fall. She will be attending Cal Poly, San Luis D'Isa, and majoring in agriculture and environmental science. Congratulations.
Nicolette's family, are you here to be a part? Okay, and our representative from Petaluma High School.
Petaluma High School would like to welcome Brooks Badley as the first Student of the Month. Brooks Badley is in the ASC Leadership Program where he is senior class tremer. He won the 2012 Western GP competition that helped raise more than $4,700 with senior prom. He has been a varsity swimmer for four years and has been the team captain for the past two. He has also played high school football and basketball. He was the Sonoma County Board H Camp Director last summer and a camp counselor for the past three summers leading up to it. Brooks currently has a 4.5 GPA where his focus is math and science. He carried four honors in AP classes this year, including calculus, DC, excuse me, AP SATs, honors physics, and AP con dance. Brooks has been accepted to several universities, including UC Davis and UC Fairbuyne, but he will be attending Cal Poly, San Luis D'Isa in the fall, majoring in civil engineering. Brooks was born and raised in Petaluma. He has three sisters, one Alex, who graduated from U of U last year, another Jordy, who is a sophomore at UC Davis, and youngest Cassie, who is a ninth grader at PJHS. He credits his family, especially his mom, Lisa, and dad Mike, with giving him the foundation, unconditional love, and encouragement he needed to strive for success and get involved and not be afraid to try new things. Brooks has thoroughly enjoyed his four years of Petaluma High School and thinks the teachers and staff do a great job. He will miss his high school, but he is really looking forward to graduation and getting started on the next chapter of his life. Congratulations.
And Brooks' family.
And Petaluma High School would like to welcome Kara Sloss as the second April Student of the Month. Kara is a student who has had a well-balanced high school experience. She has ranked eighth in her class but has also played sports throughout high school. She has always enjoyed playing soccer and was proud to play for Petaluma's varsity team her junior and senior years. Her senior year, she was also team captain. She has participated in three years of varsity swimming and played for the varsity jazz band her junior year. In the summer, she enjoyed volunteering to coach a U of 10 girls soccer team in addition to refereeing youth games. Kara is looking forward to working at Ross's Pizza as the hostess this summer before leaving for San Luis D'Isa to attend Cal Poly next fall. She is most proud of being admitted to Cal Poly's engineering program, where she plans on studying biomedical engineering. Congratulations, Kara.
And Kara's family, would you would like to be a part? Okay, well, this is our favorite part of the meeting that we have because we love hearing about the successes of our students and all of their amazing accomplishments. So, thank you for all of your hard work and for the family's support. And we will take a very short recess right now so that if any of the students might have a problem or something they have to do, so if you could sneak out quickly so that we can... You're welcome to stay though. I'd like to reconvene this meeting. Our second item under Presentations, Jane Escobedo, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, will introduce Sue Olds.
So it is my pleasure to introduce a project that's been ongoing in Petaluma for the last three years, four years. And we have a team, an odd-of-a-team of participants. Sue Olds, who is the past Assistant Superintendent at Petaluma City Schools. Nancy Case Rico from Sonoma State University. Leslie Irick from Grant Elementary School. And Miriam...
Hutchins.
Thank you. Hutchins from Sonoma State University.
And welcome. Nice to see those who I know and to meet those who I don't know as well. I'm here to give you a brief report on a grant that's been going on for four years in the Petaluma City Schools. And we, as you'll see, we're just concluding our grant. It's been highly unusual because Petaluma City Schools has been the hub and the owner of a grant that serves elementary teachers from quite a large part of a county. So we got a lot of commendation, as much as anything else, for being the host of this. It was a federal grant, and it's over. But when we got it, it was a million dollars to improve the teaching of American history in fifth grade in this region. And we originally had three years for the program, but we were given a fourth year to extend to complete our expenses and to complete all the activities. We've had eight local districts as true partners and probably 12 districts represented, local meaning from Novato up to Windsor area over to Sonoma. And we had two official partners from the very beginning in the grant. One was Sonoma State University, a program called the North Bay International Studies Project, NABIS, and the Marin Museum of the American Indian. The grant had five objectives. One was to increase content knowledge of these teachers. Another was to improve curriculum and instruction. Third was to raise achievement. Fourth was to develop teacher leaders. And the fifth was a website to disseminate information. Very unusual grant compared to most I've worked with because the emphasis was teacher knowledge rather than student achievement. The premise is, if teachers know something well, they can teach it with more creativity and more power. So we actually had several elements. The most important element probably was the three-year cohort of teachers. We had 50 teachers from the region, all elementary, five of them from our district directly, five from Old Adobe, who of course feed to our junior high and high schools. We met for three summers. We met three Saturdays a year. We took three trips. We had, as you see, classroom sessions, book study. I brought three of the four books just to kind of pass around so you see the level of work people were doing. In addition to that cohort, we had 11 more teachers from Petaluma City Schools involved with lesson development. They had coaching and support. And we had 17 teachers that went out beyond the district who were able to attend conferences, some of them presenting. And we have a website that will sustain for at least five more years. Our support is Nancy. As you heard, she was the professional development coordinator. She's in the Education Department at Sonoma State. We had three social studies, social scientists from Sonoma State, the History Department Chair, Michelle Jolly, Margaret Purser from the Archaeology Department, and Sevesis from the History Department. We had a website manager. We had external evaluation. Miriam was our grant writer. She's been the NABIS program manager. And we had teacher leaders from eight of the elementary districts. And Leslie Irick from Grant School was our teacher leader in the project. I'm going to show you through some pictures as I talk. Some represent students and some represent collages of things, but it's hard for me to convey the power of this program. One was that, as you see by the books, we were presenting content to teachers, not to 10-year-olds. But ultimately, this is a group of Grant School students, I believe, right? 10-year-olds were the recipients or the beneficiaries of the whole program. For the three-year program, there were three big themes. Two of the three words we all had to learn together. The key was to tie the content of national American history to California standards and to make very local connections. So the idea was, even though typically people teach about first contact, maybe they talk about Plymouth Rock, there was first contact in California between various cultures. And so we were able to make that relationship and that comparison. The next year was about how do communities evolve and develop after there's been contact and settlement? Because this is fifth grade standards. That's why we're here. And the third year was about the American Revolution and the Constitution. And the words we used were ethnogenesis, calypso, and heritage. I'm not going to read every one of these. I know you have a busy agenda. But you can skim and see the kind of content and literacy strategies that were supported. We would have professors giving very intense, high-level, high degree of detail, history content. But at the same time, they modeled with the adults, how can you do this in a way that people engage in it? And then the teacher leaders helped with everybody learning, how can I do this with children and still have it reach the depth of knowledge that we hope? And all of these strategies are part of the Common Core standards that you probably started to hear about, Common Core standards for literacy and English language arts. This is just a collage of some pictures showing... We weren't sitting in a lecture hall. We used the CASA library each summer. CASA Grande Library was a great location for us. And these people created things, researched things, presented things. This is an example of an activity we did as a summer and then went into Grant School. And they also made life-size explorers. Another summer, kind of you can see the faces. You can see the energy that's in the room. We did use Kennelworth for one presentation, which is why you see Kennelworth. We talked about literacy a lot. This is a sample of a poster that was developed by a group about ways that you can develop academic language, so history and literacy together. Another example of how something that was very thick and very meaty in a content was translated into a classroom in a way that students were doing something that they could identify with and they could contribute to the product. I think most of these are out of Leslie's classroom.
Thank you. Very nice.
Some of these slides were shown in Washington, DC. We took a few field trips, and then students took a field trip. This is a group of students who went down to the Maritime Museum in San Francisco and moved that as a place to learn about the shipping and the traveling by boat that happened on both sides of the continent. We looked at art. This is a pretty well-known image. We talked about it. And then here's an example of a student representing something similar. We had Heritage Days. We had a hot lat. We had colonial food. We developed a little cookbook for ourselves called The Calypso's Pantry. This is part of the... Grant birth? Grant birth. Colonial Grant birth. So I'm just trying to give you an image of the things that happened. We had themes that helped discover a lot of content. We were very cognizant of the fact that in elementary schools, teachers know that the districts have paid for curriculum and that it's been adopted. districts have paid for curriculum and that it's been adopted. So, this wasn't to take them out of the curriculum. It was to give them a way to use the adopted materials and as one of them said, bump it up a notch. The teachers, we spent last Saturday, they are so clear that they know so much more. And so, it makes it easier for them to help kids make connections. And we had this phrase of teachers became history geeks. There was a lot of learning going on. You're probably interested about evidence. We had an external evaluator. It's hard to collect a lot of evidence when you, each teacher has one group of kids, you know, and then a different group the next year. And what we've studied from one year is one unit of a whole year. And most of these teachers at the beginning were only spending at the most two hours a week on history in their whole elementary day. But our evaluator found that, we did test, pre-test and post-test students in fifth-grade classes of teachers that were involved. He found that the second year, the classes were testing higher than the other classes done the previous year, you know? So, his conclusion is that it seems that, you know, this would suggest that these teachers are getting more training and students are doing better. Another part of the data was what did the teachers gain? First of all, they stayed with us. And that was a pretty major commitment. People came for three different years for two weeks every summer. And even 75, 76% of them stayed on in year four even though they didn't have to. Lot of independent lessons were developed. We gave a pre-test, post-test every year to teachers on the history content. It's like an AP exam in level of difficulty. So, in year three, for example, the teachers were getting about 50% correct by year three on the pre-test and then about 75% on the post-test. When you ask teachers, how's it making a difference in your classroom? We're just starting to get that data back in this year, but this is how, the kinds of responses I'm getting from people now. So, while you're looking at that, I'm going to ask Leslie, I'm going to ask Leslie first, I think, to say a few words about how she feels it really impacted Grant School as an example of school in our district. Can I just stand right here? Is that okay?
Well, I have been completely honored to be involved with this program, teaching American history. It's been a professional development for me that is far beyond anything else I've ever done in my 17 years of teaching. Not only were teachers treated like professionals and, and just, you know, bringing that to everything that we did, but just being able to collaborate with really smart teachers and professors from Sonoma State and being able to take that, everything we learned back into our classrooms was just a phenomenal experience. Every single day, I mean, my students know that I am a history geek. And I was never, I was not, you know, that wasn't my background. I was an art major from San Jose State University. And now I can say that I have all this great knowledge and all this depth of knowledge. And the program culminated last summer. We went to Philadelphia, Boston, and Plymouth Plantation. We got to see things right, right there. You know, we got to go to the Constitution Center, which opened with a George Washington exhibit, and it was just phenomenal. So, overall, you know, I think I speak for probably every teacher who was in the top program for three years and extended into the fourth year because we just loved being there so much. We loved being with each other so much and sharing, sharing our lessons with each other. Even up till last Saturday, we were still sharing lessons. That, this was a phenomenal experience. So, and I really wanted to say thank you to Sue and Nancy and Miriam and others for putting this program together. It was amazing.
That's the teacher. I want Nancy to have a chance to talk through a bit about what she saw. I have a few more slides when you're done.
Okay. I've been teaching a long time, history, high school and college. And I've, this is my sixth Teaching American History grant in four different districts. And this is by far the best grant that I've worked on by far, and it has to do with Petaluma and Sue. I can't tell you how welcomed we were. Your support staff from Claire to Peggy to everyone, Angela, everything was ordered, done. CASA was welcoming. And you have to know, it's hard to please teachers during the summer for two weeks and 10-hour days. So, having CASA open and clean and welcoming and everything was so well organized even up until last Saturday. So, that doesn't happen. And so, it was very impressive and always felt supported. The teachers were amazing. They were committed. They read academic-level books that you would get in a master's program at Sonoma State University. And the idea that they really wanted to take this new content and bring it into the classroom was impressive, to see teachers as scholars. It's going to stay with me for a very long time. Also, a fourth-year follow-up, I got to work with high school teachers in Petaluma School, Valley Vista teachers. I am so, I teach from Richmond all the way to Ukiah, and I am so impressed with Petaluma teachers. I have to tell you, I am so impressed with the things that people have for a vision of what teachers need and the commitment. I have goosebumps. I'm going to sit down now.
Yes, it's such an important part of our project. I did want to touch, she mentioned, we had a couple of specialty groups going on in addition to the three-year, four-year group. One was this Valley Vista cohort who met this year and developed units, and I'll share with you in a minute what they were. And we had high school teachers who were supported in going to the California Council of Social Studies Conference and learning about integrated lesson design. We actually have a day we're kind of co-sponsoring in June in, using the Casa Grande Library for some of our high school teachers. These were the units developed at Valley Vista this year. One of the things that struck me, and I've been doing social studies and curriculum a long time, I didn't realize that second graders were actually getting worksheets on how does a bill become a law and what are the three branches of government? And so, when we started this, that particular team said, this is a really difficult concept, you know? And they've now created this wonderful set of activities and resources that get them to that point with the kids. And the others are similar. Vicki doing something about symbols of America. The third grade team has worked on a unit about Tuli because they're, you know, third grade is often California and the Native Americans. And they found this one theme they can use with all of their subjects. Then another unit on early explorers, causes of the revolution, and even in the Greek history year, something to do with the Odyssey. You also should know, we've presented twice in Washington, DC in the name of Petaluma City Schools. We had two sessions at last year's California Council of Social Studies Conference. We have teacher leaders from throughout the county, and Leslie is definitely one of them, who were part of the planning, who presented, who've done specialized workshops for other tall grants, as Nancy mentioned. And we'll be doing this workshop in Casa Grande High School for high school teachers after school's out. So, that's my summary of our grant.
Oh, is that one?
Pardon? Yeah. One of the things we did, a lot of times, is part of our evaluation and assessment of what did we just see and how does it relate to the things? We asked the teachers to take photographs and to put captions on them. And this was one of the pictures that came from somebody, so just one I used for closing the report. I want to tell you about it, just so you knew. There's no more money for this program in Washington anymore, right? It was Senator Robert Byrd's pet project. And he, it was supported for a lot of years, but he is no longer in the Senate, as you probably know. And there's a lot of other decisions up there about what happens to education money in the federal government. So, we don't see this again.
Well, I have a couple of questions. Is this something that you can then, you know, share with other fifth-grade teachers throughout our district or to continue this energy on? Because, I mean, that, it sounds like an absolutely marvelous program. And I'd hate to have that knowledge just be in, you know, little boxes and then...
Yeah. I think the Valley Vista example was a good practice for us in how to extend it into a school where we didn't have a teacher participant. Part of the reason it was Valley Vista is we had a representative from some of our, most of our other elementary schools. Also, the fact that our work lines up so well with the new Common Core standards makes it, Jane and I have talked a lot about how we can build on that and what information we have that will, can be shared. And the other part, I'm hoping, and it's too soon to tell, is when these students of both the Old Adobe teachers and the Petaluma teachers reach our junior highs, we're hoping they're going to come with a little more background so those junior high teachers in American history will have something to build on that hasn't been there before. It's eighth grade for American history. When we started this, we lined up our willing, you know, volunteers. We're going to do this, 50 people. I don't think any of them are a history major. Most of them taught two hours or less of history a week. Some of them taught only half an hour a week because in some of the elementary-only districts, they haven't really connected to the fact that history comes back at another, you know, another grade for testing. And we've changed that, those classrooms. Some of them were from Title I, very challenged schools. Some are from very high-achieving schools. This program gave us examples for them. And the website will definitely be there for at least five years with lesson plans on it, unit ideas. Yeah.
That sounds marvelous. And it tells you what, I mean, a million dollars just sounds like a lot of money. But over four years and for the number of people impacted and for the number of students potentially impacted, it's so frustrating with the budget situation we have. We can't have this sort of energy and excitement ongoing. But thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would you like to borrow it?
I can trust you, right? If you don't mind your one, I don't worry about it. Now, even Jane and I are your evidence.
I'll keep tabs.
Absolutely. There's one more. I left it home.
Thank you very much. I would need your approval of the...
Oh, you like that up, don't you?
...2012.
Excuse me.
All those in favor? Aye. I have speaker cards, but they're for an agenda item. If anybody has, wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, let me know. Okay. Then I'm going to go on to item I, recruitment activities in correspondence of school board members. You didn't hit there? Okay, I'm going to skip item I, move back to... And we will go on to item J, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion. Go in here a second. All those in favor? Aye. Under administration and human resources, item four, is a hold item, resolution 111236. Recommended motion that resolution 111236 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Eden High School Districts, offering designated personnel to sign contract and agreement documents for fiscal years 2011, 2012, and 2012, 2013 be adopted.
Yes, so this item is, has to do with our retirement incentive program and allowing the chief business official and superintendent to sign on behalf of the district for the annuity. That was the benefit for employees. We had 13 certificated employees, seven classified, and one management employee take advantage of the supplemental retirement program offered by the history researcher.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Item five, resolution 111237. Recommended motion that resolution 111237 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Eden High School Districts honoring the contributions of the teachers to quality education and declaring the week of May 7th through 11th, 2012, as week of the teacher be adopted.
So moved.
I'm really pleased to recommend that Petaluma City Schools join the nation in honoring and recognizing our teachers during the week of the teacher, May 7th through 11th. We're all indebted to teachers everywhere, particularly here in Petaluma, where our teachers continue to provide an outstanding, an exceptional education to all of our students, even during some very difficult times.
Yes. And as documented by the lady from Sonoma State who was very impressed with Petaluma teachers. So, it's nice to hear that from an outside source. We knew that internally, but it's nice to have that confirmed. So, okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Item six, resolution 111238. Recommended motion that resolution 111238 of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Eden High School Districts eliminating a total of nine classifications of classified positions totaling 141.87 hours per day, effective June 30th, 2012, be adopted.
So moved.
So.
No.
You actually have a revised resolution in front of you that has been, we are no longer recommending the layoff of clerk typists. Instead, we're planning to use to add the bilingual clerk typists to our schools when positions become available. As an initial solution, we will hire two bilingual clerk typists at two of the schools and add two-hour positions at three of our schools. Other than that, the nine, or the eight classifications, we are, the eight classifications that we are eliminating include bus driver. One is through retirement and the other is through layoff. That's because of the decreased funding from the state. Childcare assistant, and that's because of the reduction in the, it's the teen parent program and the reduction of the number of teen parents that we have been serving. Educational data technician, through retirement, we are consolidating one and a half positions to one position. Instructional assistants were paid for by site categorical funds, and that's been cut back by the site. Library assistant was an MOU in the initial hiring that limited the amount of time the site is hoping to, if they can find the funds, to bring that person back next year. Primary intervention program assistant, state cut the categorical funds that supported that program, and that program is no longer in existence. And then the bilingual instructional assistants and the bilingual program clerks. We're in the process of redesigning the way we provide English language instruction for students using a certificated rather than a classified model to better meet their needs. Due to state requirements, we'll be noticing all of these employees until we have a completely developed plan, at which time we will be recalling some of those employees, but because of the deadlines of the state, we are required to act at this time. Some of these positions will, some of these employees will also be qualified and can apply for the bilingual clerk typist positions when they become available.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Laura? I know we have speakers who wish to speak on this topic. No questions? So, let's start with Lorella, if you'd like to come forward and see what you have to say.
If everybody else is going to speak, if you guys want to line up so we can do it in a orderly fashion. My name is Lorella Cruz-McNugan. I was a 1100 Santa Barbara lawyer here in Petaluma, president of CSEA Chapter 212. I've, we have, as you can see, we have quite the support tonight. We have bilingual assistants, bilingual clerks. We have quite a few teachers, we have community members. We have people who are bilingual assistants, bilingual clerks, people who have been through the program as students and also are now clerks and bilingual assistants and other students that you may recognize from other board meetings that we've asked just to come and share their experiences through the bilingual program. And the people that are being laid off so that you can put a face to that number, that these are just numbers because we really feel that this is not a good way to serve this population because there's not going to be that many teachers to do that. And I truly do not believe that everybody in the district understands fully what bilingual assistants and clerks actually do in their day.
And next, we have, I don't know.
Lorella?
Yes.
My name is Miraya De La Cruz. I'm a former Casa Grande High School graduate, class of 2000. I went to Columbia Junior High, and I started in the program. I came knowing, knowing much at all. With the external help of Mrs. and Jose, mom somewhere over there, I went through... She helped me above and beyond. It's coming to a new country. It's applying yourself as a student and as a person, you know, to adapt to everything. I went through the motions. The Petaluma program was in Casa Grande, just starting. My class went to beginning day class, went to die. And we were about 35 students a class, and she had us every day. And it's... And it's difficult to teach us, but then, and she said herself that it's a gift, you know, when we return what we've learned. The program helps us, or helped me at least, in not only developing my English language skills, but in also confidence, self-confidence, and self-trust, and self-worth. You are, they're taught to believe in what you are, you're taught to reach for the sky and actually get there, and you are helped in many ways, more than one, to reach there. I chose this career for that particular reason. I received quite a bit, and I wanted to give back just the same. I am here for the students, and like Laura said, more wins than won, we don't just assist teachers in teaching, and we don't just find different ways to communicate with children at different age levels. And sometimes, even with high school kids, I have to, I've worked in everywhere from elementary to high school, and I have to sometimes refer to elementary strategies to teach high school kids, because they've never learned it before, or they're new to schooling it themselves. And I've learned that from bilingual assistants, from teachers, from working with everybody. We are very united, we're very close, and we've worked with teachers very well together. We're also the friendly face to the students. We are, we are their counselors, our advisors, they're, we're the ones that go for help. We are the ones that help them, you know, be confident in themselves and how to go about their day, how to be young men and women who go to college, who get a career, who can always come back and get help from us in any which way we can. We are sometimes the one that pushes them more than they need to, and we're the ones that believe in them more than themselves, and we're the ones that they reach into. I believe that, I understand to an extent that the difficulties we're going through. I understand that money is different and difficult, but I also think that it needs to be acknowledged and understand, deeply understandable. While we go on our day, every day, it's not just teaching, it's not just a classroom, it's kids' lives that we help them, we help them be better people. You know, it's what teachers do, and not because we're not certificated, we're not able to do the same thing. We, I think we, and sometimes, and in some ways, do some things better than the teachers do. We connect with kids in better ways than teachers can possibly can, because they teach more than thirty kids at a time at times, and we can devote ourselves to a smaller group. So I think that needs to be acknowledged, and from someone who went there, who lived it, who was afraid and terrified, to someone who works with them now and is very pleased to do so. Thank you.
I'm Elise Breeze, and I've been at BIA for almost ten years, grant, McNear, and currently I'm at McDowell. And I agree totally with what Lorena said. As you're restructuring how you approach the whole EL program, I would like you to understand how many things we do behind the scenes. There's so many unseen responsibilities and byproducts of our job, where the liaisons between the teachers, the students, the parents, the community. I can't tell you how many times I've figured out that puzzle piece, and I know my colleagues have done the same thing, in a conversation in the grocery store line of why that kid is not doing well in class, and a parent will say, can I talk to you for a second? How many times did people say, just for a minute, can I say something to you? And you figure out, oh, now I understand why they're struggling academically. So there's so many different sides that we as BIA has approached the students and the classroom, is from the academic side, from the cultural side, from the faces of the students and the families. So as you're restructuring, please remember there's all sorts of things that are behind the scenes, and you don't really see that we're all doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jessica Hernandez. I'm a former Casa Grande student. I graduated in 2010. I'm an older sister to two younger siblings who, as well as me, went through the ELD program. We started off, I started off in fourth grade, my younger brother started in third grade, and my little brother started in first grade. Us three, with the help of Ms. Wentes, Ms. Trejo, and Mrs. Cruz, we've all excelled all throughout high school, my little brother being a junior at Casa Grande High School, also a football player, who happens to be taking five honors or AP classes, and we could have honestly not done it without all of their help. They've not only helped us through school, but also through our personal lives. They don't only teach what's needed, but they're also there for support, counseling, and anything else that we can need. I really believe that there's more to them than just what they present in front of you guys. They're so, so community, they get involved in community events, in helping families, talking to families, and I think it's really unfair for them to get cut back on their pay when they're really the face for a lot of people, and to support them.
Thank you. Lili?
Yes. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm Lili Rivera, and I've been a bilingual assistant since 2005. I'm actually also the primary intervention program assistant, so I have two jobs on this list that are being cut. So that's a little bit more hurtful, I think. I know the primary intervention program are out of your hands, I understand that. The grant money is being held or cut, so I know that there's a hearing coming up, and I'm really crossing my fingers that that'll come through and we can continue the program, because the intervention program is serving EL students as well, kids that have moderate to mild issues adjustments in school. And we just got started, I can speak on behalf of McDowell and Mary Collins, and we're already seeing a difference in the program in just a session and a half, and I would love to do a PowerPoint presentation in three years to tell you how successful it was. On behalf of the BIA, I've worked in four schools from K to 12th grade, including San Antonio, and I've seen a diverse student population in the EL program, not just Latinos but serving sixty-seven languages. I think you have to keep that into account when you're restructuring ELD. We're not just talking about Latinos. We have other home languages other than Spanish that we need to consider. I'm going not to repeat what my colleagues have already said and the students. We are the face, we are educators, and I believe in 2005, Mr. Jane Escobedo told me at a para educator seminar that I was an educator, and that I was an integral part of a child's education, and I would like to continue being that. So please reconsider not just the layoffs, but how you restructure the ELD program for Petaluma City Schools.
Hi, my name is Gustavo Samo Mendoza, and I attended Valley Vista Elementary and Petaluma Junior and Petaluma High School. I'm currently a junior there. And I'd just like to start with a personal story. This man named Federico Fellini once said that, "A different language means a different vision of life." And my first language was Spanish, and I was so fortunate to have Ms. Perkins, who I got Spanish instruction from her, and I continued to learn how to read Spanish, how to perfect my accent, and that was just so important to me to maintain my culture and my first language to me, that I could actually have a teacher that was helping me read my first language before starting our English. So I received help from bilingual aides, Maria Agui, Mardeya, and Elin, Grace, Eda, and Teresa de Sal in kindergarten. And just to have somebody next to me that can explain to me and guide me through all the grammar and language instruction that I'm receiving was such a big help to me, I can't even explain it, all the way until fifth grade when I was exited out of the language learning program. And it was just so nice to have them there by my side in the classroom. It would get really frustrating at times because I wouldn't understand things in English, or it took me longer to finish my activities, but they're always right there pushing me to continue and keep working, and thanks to them, I got into advanced English in junior high. I'm excelling in my English courses. I've been studying the French language for five years now, and it's just so great that they could give me so much motivation and realize that language means so much more than just the written word and all the rules of grammar, it's a way for us to communicate and convey our emotions and our feelings to others. And my high school English teacher, Ms. O'Connor, she's been discussing with me what's going on with the layoffs and everything. And I just think it's important to realize that when somebody like me, whose first language is not English, and we're starting to receive instruction in just English, it can be, you might, it's hard to imagine what it'd be like for one of you guys to be placed in a new country and expected to learn their grammar and how to speak their language. It's really scary to be surrounded by people who you don't understand, and people who you can't communicate with, but thanks to the bilingual assistants and everybody that really cares for English language learners, it's possible to learn the language, and in my case, learn another language, French. And I'm just so fortunate to have had them during my educational career. And I have a little sister who's in second grade now, and I know that the bilingual aid often translates the homework, not every page, but for example, she'll have reading that she has to do, and the bilingual assistant will write in Spanish, so my parents will understand. It's just little things like that that mean so much to parents that somebody actually cares for them too. It's important for the children to succeed. And I'm so thankful for all the bilingual assistance, and it's really disheartening to see that they might not be there for kids after me, that they're going to be pushed into an environment where they don't have that support and counsel. It's just really disheartening that. It seems like there's a trend to kind of distance ourselves from what's hard and what's difficult, but I think we need to do what we can with the amount of money we have, and I don't know anything about the exact numbers or anything, and I know some situations are impossible to fix, but it's just, it's hard for me to realize that kids after me won't have the same resources as me. So thank you for listening to everything I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Berza Zavala. I work at two schools. I work at Crossroads Community Day School and also at McKinley Elementary School. And I agree with my fellow speakers about reconsidering who you're going to be cutting for next year's cuts, and so we, or as a bilingual instructional assistant, we fill that gap between the teachers and the community, between the parents and the teachers, between the students and the parent, and the teacher, and the principal. So, so here, and there's a lot that goes on, not just working inside a classroom, just like one of the fellow speakers mentioned, we work behind the scenes. We work with the student, we work with the parent, we work with the school, we work with the community, we work with the teacher, and that all, we fill in that gap, and also that bridge between students that have been here in the country and also students that are newcomers. So it's not just necessarily the ones that are, you know, newcomers, but also the students that are here. And so to summarize, to conclude, I'm here, you know, on behalf of speaking on McKinley Elementary School, that it would be disheartening if there wasn't any bilingual instructional assistance at McKinley.
Sé que la mayoría de ustedes no van a entender lo que digo, así que voy a necesitar de alguien que me traduzca. Soy padre de una niña de nueve años.
I'm the parent of an eight-year-old girl.
Y es preocupante el no tener gente que nos pueda traducir a las escuelas.
It's worrying me that we're not going to have people who can translate for us at schools.
Es casi imposible poder ayudar a mi hija. Apenas puedo escribir y leer mi propio idioma, y sin ayuda de alguien en una escuela que me pueda traducir sería muy difícil la educación para mi hija.
It's almost impossible for me to help my own daughter. I can hardly write and read my own language, let alone having nobody to help us in that school system. It'd be almost impossible for me to do that.
Y me gustaría que por favor reconsideren el apoyo hacia las escuelas con las personas bilingües. Gracias.
I would like you please reconsider the support toward the bilingual instructional assistance towards schools. Thank you.
If you have any digital questions or comments?
I do. And the question that I have is, I'm looking at this list, I'm not sure where I'm directing this. Ron, am I directing this to you? We'll start with you, and you'll be first.
Yes.
I'm looking at this list in the top, the revised resolution, and the top two-thirds are bilingual instructional assistants, bilingual program clerks, all the way down to bus driver. Bilingual instructional assistants and the bilingual program clerks were noticing by this resolution, to me the time deadline, is that correct?
Yes.
The bus driver, bus driver, childcare assistant, infant toddler, educational data technician, instructional assistant, instructional assistant, library assistant, primary intervention program assistants, there's two of them. I didn't hear anybody speak to that.
Yeah, one gal spoke to the primary intervention.
Which is, okay, so there's nobody here to speak to you. Those are actual, these positions have gone. These ones up here, the position is gone, but you're talking about a restructure of the entire program, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay. So let me ask this sort of general question. In this environment where we are reducing services here and there and to and fro because of a lack of an ability to pay for them, is your restructure that you're contemplating now, and I see, it's not complete, Jane, it's not complete, but you have a plan, are you going to come up with one? Is your plan going to be better than this current situation, or will it not be as good as this current situation?
Our plan is to provide additional support to our bilingual students in the form of both bilingual instructional assistants, bilingual community liaisons, and bilingual resource teachers.
So let me just ask it a different way. Is it your plan to improve based upon what you're trying to do, or?
Yes, it is our plan to improve the program.
That was my question.
Improve test scores.
Yeah.
That wasn't my question, the question was the program. Lorena, wherever you are.
Please, please.
Oh, there you go. You're usually up here. You're usually in this class.
Okay.
Okay. That was my question.
I feel since we just get, you know, a little bit in our packets, and by law, we're not supposed to talk to each other to figure things out before we get here, it sometimes is a little awkward, maybe almost silly, feeling like you're asking stupid questions, but I feel like right here is the time where it has to happen, so I feel like I need a little bit more specifics. Really, I need... Not do that, though, please. No, I just feel like I'm new on the board. I'm new to education as my children are little and I'm not an educator. So they're speaking in human lives and what they're seeing in the classroom and their stories. And we're talking in educational mumbo jumbo gargle. And I need to bridge the gap in my mind before I know exactly what we're doing. And you talked about improving the program and we're talking about lost jobs. That we're talking some may be hired back, but we're not talking how many. I don't know if we know that. I don't know how many people that we're laying off are gonna be qualified to be hired back. And so I need a little more.
So I can start and Steve will jump in when he needs to.
Thank you.
So over the course of the last five years or so, the district has fallen into program improvement. The schools have fallen into program improvement, all of that kind of thing. And that has to do with how kids are progressing through the language development levels of English. Okay? So there's an expectation from the state that a student, say, you have a perfect little kindergartner who enters the school system, doesn't speak any English at all, but over the course of the next five to seven years, that little student will become fluent in English and become redesignated. Okay? So with support along from the school system, that student will receive English language development services. That student will receive all of the things that the state asks us to do. And that research has proven to support the kids to full proficiency parity with their English-only peers. Our goal is that those students reach that parity before they leave the elementary schools. That's the goal of our program, for that perfect little kid who comes in at kindergarten. Now, kids don't come in neat packages like that. Kids come in at different times, all throughout their ages. You know, families come from different countries, from different places around the world. And so not everybody can meet that goal. So we have to slide that back. But the goal for the state is that within five years, they say, and we stretched that a little bit because we know that kids need a little bit more time between six and seven years, but by the time they leave the grade school, they need to be redesignated. Okay? So all of the data that we have collected over the last couple of years, starting with when the county office of education first came to Petaluma City Schools and started working with Petaluma City Schools, has shown us that our kids are not progressing on that timeline. Our kids are not acquiring English within that timeline. So we, it's made us step back and look at what are we doing to support our students and how can we increase that support to them so that they can reach that parity with their English-only peers, whether it be at sixth grade, at eighth grade, at ninth grade. In addition to that, recently, well, in the course of the last two years, there has been very strong research out having to do with biliteracy. And how the biliterate mind, not only the bilingual mind, but the biliterate mind has a greater flexibility to problem solve, to approach life from a lot of different points of view because they're constantly, the mind is constantly going back and forth between these languages. And it really is a benefit to students. So as we began to think about how we can increase the support to our students, we looked at not only their English language, but also their Spanish language, since the vast majority of our students are Spanish speakers. So how can we support the students both in gaining greater parity with their English-only peers and encourage them to keep their Spanish language and encourage that Spanish language development along? So that's the plan that we are in development with. The plan is not completely developed because it really has to be specific to a school population. So we're working with the principals and the schools to tailor that plan for each school. It has to be tailored. I've worked in, this is my area, EL is my area, bilingual is my area. I've been involved in bilingual education since 1978. And I know that when you have a population of 20 kids, you have to serve them one way. When you have a population of 50 kids, you have to serve them another way. When you have a population of 150 kids, there's other kinds, each kind of situation causes a different kind of a program too. So we're really working to tailor the program to the kids and to the kids in each school system. So that's kind of, those are the two goals behind the restructuring. The parity with their English-only peers is number one. And number two is biliteracy. And then the specifics are being put into place. I know that we are going to have, I don't know the number of hours, but I know we'll be calling back at least five bilingual instructional assistants. We'll be creating a new position called a bilingual community liaison. And we will be actually putting a bilingual clerk typist into each elementary school. So it's not that everybody's going away, it's that things are changing.
In those positions that we will be opening, we'll be opening the insight only for the people that are losing their jobs. It's not, but there may be some of these people who will not end up with a position in the district. And they'll be replaced by certificated employees that we'll be bringing to the elementary schools. And maybe some certificate support and sections being added at our secondary schools as well. Then again, in looking at the research and looking at successful programs in addressing the English language population, English language learner population, you know, we have the sites now going back and evaluating their own program and making determinations to what modifications they will make. And there will be a change. The bilingual clerks will be, very few of them, mainly, I believe, Petaluma Junior High is looking to maintain them. But again, many of the bilingual program clerks will be eligible to apply for the bilingual clerk typist positions that will be on our, in our elementary campuses.
I have a couple of questions. Are we modeling our new revised program after districts that have been successful?
Yes.
And then my next question is, is this new program gonna be in place by fall? Because these positions are gonna end and there's gonna be a summer break. And we're talking about lives, your people's livelihood. And they need to know that there's gonna be a program in the fall and what the program's gonna consist of and what positions are gonna be available and when can they apply? It's very frightening to say, I have no job and what are my prospects? And when am I gonna get a chance to apply?
That timeframe? I feel like two things, there's both aspects. We have the parent that's concerned by the child, his child in school, what services will be there for that child? And then we have, like Carolyn's saying, the people that are wondering what their livelihood's gonna potentially look like.
So the principals are getting back to me now. We will have the positions, the positions will be ready to fly within a couple of weeks here. We are hoping to have everything kind of settled down and hired and ready to go before... Well, it would be wonderful to have it happen before school is out.
So that's your goal?
That's our goal.
And then those positions will be in place in the fall for the students?
Yep.
And can you tell me a little bit about what you think the difference in the quality of education kids will get between the BIA, the bilingual instructional assistant, and the credential position? Can you just tell me what that shift is gonna look like?
Sure. Right now, the BIAs are kind of, they're spread across classrooms. And they kind of, they move from like, say, a first-grade classroom to a third-grade classroom or from an English class to a history class. And they kind of spread across. We will have, with the bilingual resource teachers, they'll actually be pushing into classrooms where kids are. They'll be working with the teacher as a team, with the classroom teacher. It will be a professional development model for the classroom teacher where they'll work as a team and the bilingual teacher will help implement different instructional strategies that will reach all kids, but in particular, the EL kids. We will be able to lower the number of kids that are in some of our ELD classes that are in our secondary. Right now, when you walk into an ELD class, a lot of times, there's 20, 30 kids in a class. And it's very difficult to learn a language in a class that big. So with the additional sections, we'll be able to lower the class sizes.
Okay, that was my question, because we seem to be increasing class sizes. We're looking towards that, but because of budget cut. And I'm just concerned that if you have somebody that's assisting, the teacher is a student, not gonna have access or a parent or family member to somebody, do you understand what I'm saying?
Right, absolutely. Yeah. So, but we'll also have the bilingual community liaison position that will be able to bridge that gap between teacher, parent, student.
Is there gonna be one of those at each school or that's your...
Yes, yeah. Either a clerk type, the bilingual clerk typist or a bilingual community liaison.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is for purposes of the state-required deadlines, we are considering reducing these positions as of this date. But that your goal is to redesign the program and hire back, hopefully, and you're only flying positions internally to current existing employees for potential new positions to meet the requirements of the redesigned programs at each site. And you hope to have this done by the end of the school year?
Yes.
Okay. And certainly before the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Okay. So the other thing I heard was that you wanted to take the opportunity to increase biliteracy, which is one of the things that Gustavo spoke of and which I think we've discussed at a prior meeting. Because it helps the students in more ways than one.
Yes.
So, okay. Any further questions?
I have something to say. I keep on hearing that they're gonna hire five more people. I, from the top of my head, I counted 16 different schools in this school district. So one of my questions is, with you hiring five people back, maybe, how are you gonna cover the rest of the schools?
Yeah.
I didn't hear just five. I didn't, well, when I asked about bilingual instructional assistance, yeah, we didn't, because I counted when, was it eight? I thought, actually, when you said the number, I counted because there are more here that are being laid off than you talked about retiring. However, you also talked about changing classifications. And some positions are not going to be good for one union and be good for another union because we're going to, which is, again, that's a very tough call. But in that realm, I have to look at what's, we have to look at what's best for students. But that's tough for the people in this room and I understand that, I think we all do. But so I think it was eight, though, not five.
Could I make one more comment and I'm sorry that I didn't say it before? Can I?
Yes.
A few people here have asked me to mention, and I mentioned this today in negotiations, but it says, not about negotiations, but there are, one of the ladies back here said, do they understand about SSTs and about the meetings and the translations that are done by the bilingual assistants?
We've had before, we've had translations at the board level and we do understand that.
Yeah. But I don't think that even at the site level, they're aware of actually how much of that happens during the day and the phone calls. And when they talk about teachers, they're talking about McKinley, one full-time teacher, one person to go for three grades. How much time is a student gonna have with one teacher in three different grades? Now, I don't know how many students they have there, I didn't do my homework on that. One teacher at McDowell, a half a teacher at the other three elementary schools. I have not heard what their plan was for the high school. You can see those teachers here, they're here because they don't, they don't think this is a good model. And I want to share with you, just as a sharing, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't say it before. But I met with the bilingual assistants last week to talk about things, to talk about if they would like to come to the meeting. And you should know that their biggest priority, or the people standing in the back of the room, the kids, because they're concerned that their needs are not gonna be met. So that's what I wanted to say.
When I started in 1986, we had three-hour aides in every classroom. It's gotten cut back every year, every so often. And the class sizes are bigger. We put more impact on the teachers by, you know, where the assistants always kind of handled other clerical things for them. So if we're gonna support the teachers and the children, you're talking about hiring a teacher when you can have bilingual aides that are, have no insurance and their work lasts, so... Okay, it's just kind of frustrating, that's why.
I understand that. And I want you all to know that I appreciate personally all of the input and everybody's who came forward with their speaker cards communicated extraordinarily well their perspective of the needs of the students. And I want you all to know that up here, the needs of the students is our first priority and our really only priority. In order to serve the students, we have to have the best teachers and the best classified staff. And we honestly feel that Petaluma is unique and that we do have the best teachers and the best classified staff in the county. We also recognize that everybody has a slightly different perspective on how best to meet the needs of the kids. And that's why we really appreciate your input. At this point, we, I have to call for a vote on this particular item, this particular resolution. It doesn't mean that everything is finished. At the district level and at the site level, discussions and planning will continue to try to make the program the best program for the students and in meeting the needs of the personnel that have been so valuable to Petaluma. So at this point, I have to stop the discussion and we have to have a vote. But I really, really want you to know that you have been heard and that the work that you do is very valuable to our kids and to the entire community of Petaluma. Because I have seen it in action in the grocery store, et cetera. And it is what makes Petaluma a very wonderful community. So thank you for all of your support. I also wanted to comment when the gal from Sonoma State was talking about the support with CASA opening. I know classified staff had to have helped with that. And I want to acknowledge that we see all of the work that you do in the background because things don't run smoothly without you. So thank you very much for that. Okay. Now we have to decide on item six. The recommended motion is to approve the elimination of a total of nine classifications, of classified positions. I've already read the resolution and we've had a, so moved, you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That passes.
We all said aye.
They all said aye, that was fine. Okay, so that passes. We have additional business. So if you are going to leave, if you could be as quiet as possible, that would be wonderful. You're welcome to come to any future meetings to discuss. We often have budget items, et cetera, to discuss. Item seven. Resolution 111239, recommended motion that, resolution 111239 of the Board of Education of Petaluma City Elementary and Junior High School Districts, reducing an instructional assistant special education position from five hours per day to 4.6 hours per day, effective June 30th, 2012, be adopted. from five hours per day to 4.6 hours per day, effective June 30th, 2012, be adopted.
Wait a minute, I thought we were going to move that to the menu.
No, we're moving, I had the wrong one.
Yeah, this is a position that was hired under a memo of understanding with a very specific time limit, term limit. And it is, because we're not sure of the needs in this position, we're cutting back if the needs. Or, yeah, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have several discussion items on first reading, so very supportive policy. Anybody wish to discuss those?
Wait, stand by just a minute. Aye. Oh, no.
All right, under Business Services, item five. Petaluma City Elementary School District Citizens Oversight Committee recommended motion that the Board appoint Daniel Drummond as the Taxpayers Organization Representative to serve on the Petaluma City Elementary School District Citizens Oversight Committee. So I was going to say, can we combine that with item six? Which is the equivalent on the High School District Citizens Oversight Committee. So item five and six together? So moved.
Second.
Okay.
So when the district passed the partial taxes, we put in the language that we would have an oversight committee to ensure that the funds were being spent appropriately. And we have had a longtime person leave, and this created the opening. And so this is a replacement of that person who served on the committee for quite a number of years.
So does this person actually have to be part of a bona fide taxpayers' organization?
I don't know.
Let Steve speak to that, we just seem to be.
We did see a representative from the Taxpayers Association.
An actual organized group. So this happened to be the Sonoma County Taxpayers Association?
Correct.
Was that my question, was that our only candidate or applicant?
Yeah, this was the only person. We've had the same person on the committee since its inception in 2004. And that person has had a desire for some time to get off. We asked him to stay on until he could find a replacement. And at this point, I believe this gentleman's the president of the Taxpayers Association.
So people aren't lobbying for these seats?
And he's stepped up and is willing to serve on the district partial tax committee.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And we're holding item seven there. Under Educational Services, with consent, item K, Future Business Calendar of Activities for Board Members Consideration. Oh, wait, I got to go back to item I, thank you. Okay, back to item I, Reporting Activities in Correspondence of School Board Members. It has been a very busy April and May will be even busier. Various sporting events, tennis, baseball, softball, and school site visits at Pen Grove and Kennelworth. The Community Achievement Awards were last week, where we get to hear about the amazing top 10 at each graduating class. And they are remarkable young people. McNear Earth Day, the Westside Band Festival, the Grant Drama Production, and the Trustee Symposium at Skol. So it's been busy, and there's a long list of events coming up in May for consideration as well.
I want to add a couple of events after you go to the next thing.
Okay. Item K, Future Business Calendar of Activities for Board Members Consideration and Agenda Items for our next meeting, which is going to be here on May 8th. Anything specific?
No, it'll be routine items.
We do have a report next month, and I can't remember what it is right now, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We look forward to it.
Yeah.
All right, and then upcoming events, we have a host of events, including the various graduations and promotions at the end of May.
And then, I don't know if it got really widely publicized, and I don't know if people can get to it, I don't know how fast this gets up. But the 25th, the art docent thing, it's the first time we've done this at McDowell, where all the Petaluma City School and elementary schools are showing their art to the art docent program.
We should have said that one, at least Bruce was here.
Wednesday, 6 to 8, tomorrow, Wednesday, 6 to 8 at McDowell. So that one's important. Butternag, oh, is this weekend? With our bands are going to be in it. And also, I thought it'd be worth mentioning that Kennelworth Junior High School Woodshop's going to be selling pens to help build a school in Rwanda at a booth at Butternag. So stop by and buy a wood pen that's been made by students, I had to plug that. And then I just got this today, I'll give it to you. Saturday, May 5th.
Wait a minute, Cheryl, can I interject? Would you hold up your wood pen, Carolyn?
Is that one of them?
Okay, theirs are better than that.
Really?
Yeah, awesome. I'm not kidding you, if you get a chance to buy one.
I will, because.
Buy one, I mean, I was amazed, Cheryl and I were looking at the, wait a minute. I thought you were kidding me. I thought you were kidding me at first, like, no, you didn't make this one, they're making it. It's actually amazing.
And then I just got this today, Saturday, May 5th, 10:00 a.m. to noon at Valley Vista. They are celebrating and unveiling a mural of the Shing River Wetlands. I think there's going to be docents from shoulder to back there.
Okay, so now we have to do the public report of action taken in closed session. Actually, we haven't taken action, we will be taking action here. All right, case number 44. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the Board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district comprehensive school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2011-2012 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance. Do I hear a motion?
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Could we just remind those that may be watching at home that all of this was presented in closed session so that there's actually facts to go behind these decisions?
Thank you. So they know that we aren't just randomly making decisions, yes. Case number 45. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the Board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2011-2012 school year and the fall semester of the 2012-2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Salute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Case 46. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the Board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2011-2012 school year and the fall semester of the 2012-2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, anger management, and substance abuse counseling programs and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Case number 47. A case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. The recommended motion is for the Board to expel and to suspend the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to allow continued enrollment in a district school under mandated conditions. The student suspended expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of the 2011-2012 school year and the fall semester of the 2012-2013 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, life skills program or substance abuse counseling program and screenings, community service, and appropriate academic performance.
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we will adjourn this meeting for sending of papers of a routine nature.